Editorializing, I understand that some of these questions might need or require a little bit of framing. But please try and do your best to limit that. And we'll get started right at six, so that's just about a minute or two away. Okay. All right. Hi, good evening, everybody, and welcome to this special school board meeting on this evening of December the 20th, 2016. Before we begin, if we would, please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I thank you for the quite a great turnout tonight, and I certainly appreciate, as well as I'm sure the rest of the board, all of you who are very interested in meeting our sole finalist currently at this point for the next superintendent of Lake County. I have a whole stack of questions here submitted by you. So that being said, I think, you know, I'll invite Ms. Carnegie to try to keep her answers to a minimum, but still answer the questions, that way you all get an opportunity to understand and get your questions and concerns addressed. So at this point, I'd like to welcome our finalists for Lake County Superintendent. Well, it is a lot of questions, so I don't know if, what would be more comfortable? I think they're voting for you here at the table. Yeah, and that'll give a good view from the camera here for the folks at home.
And I'll have to make this work. I'll be answering your questions, so I'd like to talk to you.
What about right here? Yeah, come on up, come on up.
They got to see my backside at the last meeting.
Sure, sure. That'd be fantastic, because these are the folks who submitted the questions. So certainly it would be appropriate for you to be able to address them. And certainly, we as a board have had a chance to get our questions answered over the last couple of weeks, and now this will be your turn. If you've submitted a question, Mr. Johnson has a chance to look at that question to ensure that we are asking, that it falls within the legal parameters of what we can be asking in an interview-type setting. With that, there may, you may find that there might have been a slight revision here or there, but that the essence of the question should still be captured. However, if you feel like you're the one who submitted the question and you didn't quite get an answer, or you didn't feel like it was quite answered fully, if you just give a little simple hand wave, we'll try to make sure that your question gets addressed tonight, all right? With that, ready for our first one?
I'm ready.
All right.
Let's go.
First one is this: "I see that Clay County hired a lobbyist. Did you find it helpful in past efforts?"
This was the first time that we had hired a lobbyist. We just, we had some very particular needs, funding being one of them. And it just felt like we needed someone who had a full-time focus and emphasis and was invested in our needs and relaying those needs and having the connections there in Tallahassee. It was extremely helpful. I have served as a legislative liaison with the district for the past several years. So it was helpful to me to have that relationship and somebody who could be in Tallahassee more than I could, since at the time I was running a lot of the operations of the district. So it was helpful for me to have that person there. We were able to walk away at the end of the legislative session with a million dollars for our CTE programs, as well as a $500,000 a year in military-connected land that was reoccurring, and that had not been previously, funds that were available to us. So we walked away with one and a half million dollars as a result of their efforts there. So I did find it to be helpful. But certainly, as a legislative liaison, I'm very well-versed and have the connections in Tallahassee that should you choose not to have that. And I don't believe that the board does have the representation there that I will certainly serve as your advocate and liaison in Tallahassee.
Thank you. Next question is about bullying. This member of our community writes, "I have noticed in the Clay County anti-bullying policy 1.12, Section F..."
Somebody's done their research.
"...report an act of bullying." Number two states, "Faculty and staff are required and must report any allegations of bullying or violations of this policy to the principal/ designee or appropriate district administrator. Failure to report will result in actions or discipline consistent with the collective bargaining agreement provision, up to and including termination of employment." So the question is this: "Would you consider adding this provision to the collective bargaining for teachers and principals, as well as include it into our anti-bullying policy due to under-reporting in our district?"
Well, I think that I would certainly entertain any policy revisions that need to be made and working alongside our teachers' union, support union, as well as the board, to look at policies. If there's questions or concerns about things that they feel are lacking, that will be part of my responsibility is to look at those policies and make revisions accordingly. So I will entertain any changes that I think are good for kids, that make sense, and that collectively we can agree upon.
I think this one goes on to a couple of pages. Right, so, "Our county commission is preparing to cut much-needed impact fees. How will you generate support to keep impact fees at the current level? Based on your research and interaction, and given your status as a certified accreditation observer, what have you identified as our number-one opportunity?" I think these are actually two different questions.
I was gonna say.
Yes, okay. So I guess our first one is in regards to impact fees and generating support to keep the funding at the current level.
Well, certainly, the funds are critical to the operations of the district. So it's about 13 million, I believe, that you're getting from impact fees, which go a long ways to supporting our schools. So I'm certainly going to be in favor of keeping those impact fees. But, you know, working alongside those, if we're going to reduce any funding, we need to have another source of funding. It's all about our kids, every penny counts. We have 42,000 kids here, every kid counts, and every penny counts. And I'm gonna fight to keep every penny, and I'm gonna fight to get a lot more of those pennies, whether it be in Tallahassee or locally, to increase revenue, be creative, think about grants that are available and other funding sources that we can continue to generate more money, so that we can make improvements for our facilities. I know there's a great need there, and we have some, a lot of growth in the area. So generating capital outlay dollars are gonna be critical to our, to meeting the needs of our kids as we think about the growth and other opportunities in the district.
And then the second question is about our number-one opportunity. What have you identified as that?
There's a lot of opportunities here, I can tell you that. There's so many amazing things that are happening, and I've never seen a community that is just so invested and it's in the community. And saying that, can I just take a minute and say, "Thank you and congratulations to the Education Foundation and their recent award for the amount of revenue that they've generated and what they're doing in this community, that they've been recognized nationally for that." So one opportunity that I see that is critically important is really looking at the needs of our learners. There's a lot of things in regards to your lower-performing students where there's a big gap. So I think our greatest opportunity is meeting the needs of our lower-performing kids by looking at what interventions are in place in those schools, for making sure that the teachers have the training and the resources they need to meet the lower-performing kids, and let's move those kids. I've committed to really looking at your lowest 300 schools and making them a priority. There's no reason why they're even in this district, because there's too much potential, too much talent in here. And with this community support, I have no, I am certain that we are gonna move these kids, all kids, focusing specifically on your lower-performing kids as a huge opportunity for growth and academic achievement.
Thank you. "With the understanding that the district must teach to the academic standards that the Florida DOE mandates, as an educator, do you believe the current ELA and math standards are: (1) developmentally appropriate with respect to elementary grade and these children's cognitive development; (2) sufficient for students interested in STEM careers; (3) accurate in their emphasis on writing instead of reading to develop good readers, or good writers? Why or why not? And if not, what can we do as a district to tackle these deficiencies?" That's kind of a lot in that question.
Can I see that?
I don't think the author will mind if I pass it along, so she can refer back to that in her answer. Is that all right?
Oh, that's like a lot of questions in one.
Good one.
All right, so the first part of that being about the standards themselves. First of all, just let me say, because I know that it's a big topic, I am not a fan of Common Core. I am a fan of higher standards for kids, more rigorous standards for kids, that help to ensure that they are college and career-ready. So we have to keep that in mind, because as we think about the developmentally appropriateness of these standards, for some kids, they are developmentally appropriate, and for others, they aren't. And it all goes back to that differentiated piece of learning to understand the individual needs of kids. So what we need to ensure is that we look at every child, looking at their individual needs, to determine what is developmentally appropriate for them. Remember that the state does not, only the standards define what it is that kids have to know and be able to do. It doesn't tell us how. It is a local decision as to how we implement the standards. So we develop pacing guides and those types of things that are in classrooms that we can control. So in terms of the pace matching the development of the kids, that is all under our control. And so we just have to make sure that we're making good local decisions. The other thing that we have to keep in mind is that, and that's probably a later question, so I won't even get into that right now. But I was gonna, I was going off on my tangent about the things that I won't support in regards to this that has to do with the over-testing, and I'm sure that that question is probably coming and one that I will be very adamantly opposed to, to increase the, try to minimize the amount of testing that's going on with kids. "Sufficient for students' interest in the STEM careers." As I said earlier, I'm a big advocate for career and technical education, especially those in the STEM fields. In Clay County, we've, over the past three years, under some work that I've done with CTE, we've increased our career academies from 19 to 30, and most of them have been in the area of STEM. We've taken that down to the local level, I mean, to the elementary level, and put robotics programs into every elementary school through some STEM grants that we've received as a priority to ensure that kids have access to those types of relevant tools and opportunities that will help develop their interest in the area of STEM. I think that question was specifically going back to the standards and whether or not that they do support on the development of kids in career fields. But remember, as you think about what the standards are designed to do, they're asking for the what. What is it that kids need to know and be able to do? And a lot of it is to think more critically and at higher levels. Kids also have to be able to operate independently and show that they know what they're doing collectively. So that whole idea of collaborative learning, as well as showing independent learning, does help kids in the area of STEM as we think about those higher-performing, those career fields, whether it be in the field of technology, for example. There's, the standards do have some digital media requirements that kids understand how to operate and utilize different medias. "Accurate in their emphasis on writing instead of reading." I'm not sure that "accurate in their emphasis on writing instead of reading to develop good writers." I'm not sure I understand the question.
Would you like to clarify?
Yeah, please.
And, oh, I'm sorry, if you wouldn't mind coming up so they can get you on the microphone, so the folks at home would hear the clarified question. Thank you so much.
Hi, Lori. We have 1,300 members in the county. And my concern is that the ELA standards focus more, as per Sandra Stotsky, who wrote the Massachusetts standards and was asked to approve the Common Core standards. She refused to do so, because she stated that the standards in ELA focus more on writing than on reading, and to be a good writer, you need to be a good reader. And here in Lake County, we tend to, our AR has been kind of let behind in the middle school and is only being focused in the elementary school.
Okay. So the question is, do you feel like there's a lack of emphasis on writing?
I feel that there's a lack of emphasis on reading to be a better writer.
Well, and again, you know, one of the things that I'm committed to is looking at all of our programs and looking at our instructional design. I did give many of you a copy of the action plan, many of you have seen that. And one of the major areas of focus is really looking at the instructional programs. I, of course, the standards should combine a lot of reading with writing. We know that the two go hand-in-hand. But I don't know what's happening locally in terms of your programs, and so I'm gonna be committed to being into every school, looking at what programs are in place, what is the instructional framework that's in place, and what's our expectation for kids? And so I will have you a much better answer to this question once I truly get into the schools and know exactly what's going on. But we certainly want to make sure that, you know, reading is a huge priority and that we're making sure that we're meeting the needs of the kids in every area.
Thank you very much.
All right, this is a two-part question, if you will. "In our classrooms, ongoing now for four to five years, our teachers are required to display various criteria on the walls, boards, et cetera. Everything has to have the exact wording, list, placement. You and I know, once an item is there for any length of time and is not looked at anymore, just kind of forgotten. Yet the district sends administrators to evaluate teachers in the classroom. And if the teacher does not have these items displayed exactly, or teaching the exact standard that week, based on a pacing map, then they are marked down. Teacher's time would be much more productive being able to use their after-hours time developing their assignments, rather than hanging things on the wall." So I think, here's the second piece, and then it puts it into form of a question here. "This item relates back to the above-referenced pacing map. A young family I know has two elementary-aged children. The kindergarten child is having trouble, but because the pacing map is on steroids, if the student does not get it, too bad, time to move on. There is no time to address a child who is falling behind in the classroom. This occurs more and more, because the teachers have so much, have lost so much instruction time. Do these two issues occur now in Clay County? If not, could you promise to look into it here in Lake County? If so, could you review it and see how it could be implemented differently based on state legislation requirements?"
Okay, another big question. These are very thoughtful questions.
Our community is very interested and concerned.
Yes, yeah, and I appreciate that. And really, that goes back to the other comment of really understanding some of the local decisions. And, you know, pacing guides have their, certainly have their place, because they do help teachers to provide some structures as they think about all the standards and what needs to be accomplished within a year. But they are guides, and we need to remember that they are guides. They are not the gospel, and that teachers know the needs of their kids and that they need to have the autonomy to move at whatever pace their kids are moving. But again, remember, in a classroom, there's kids moving at all different paces, and that goes back to that differentiated piece. There cannot be a one-size-fits-all, which is why a pacing guide cannot, it's a guide. And you cannot meet the needs of individual kids if you are tied to a pacing guide. I don't know about the things on the wall, but I'll look into the things on the wall. You know, often what we put on the wall might be the standard or whatever, so that the kids can establish the purpose, which is good. Why are we doing what we're doing? Here's what we're learning today, it's a reference. That should probably change as the instruction changes from day to day. But I will certainly look into that. But again, the pacing guide issue is, it's a guide. I don't know how to better answer that question, but we've just got to trust teachers to know what to do and to do it. And I'm gonna support them along the way, making sure that they have the training to know how to differentiate instruction, because that's, that is gonna be my reoccurring theme, we gotta meet the individual needs of kids. That is what the mission of this district is. It says that we will provide opportunities for all students through individualized instruction to excel. And so if we mean that, if that is truly our mission, then how are we going about making sure that that happens? And that's one of the things that I want to make sure, how are we making sure that all means all? Because when we say all, it means meeting the needs of all learners. And I think that there is a commitment to that, I sense that in the community, and I want to support that and make sure that truly, that mission is being accomplished and that the individual needs of every child are being met, whether it be through acceleration programs at the higher end or intervention programs at the lower end. Kids need to be more engaged. I'm concerned about the graduation rates, and I really want to focus, I want to talk to kids. I want to know, what is it in high school that's not hooking you? Where's the disconnect? And what programs can we put in there? That's why we've really grown our CTE programs, because I feel like that is a huge way to engage kids and connect kids back to relevant learning and to prepare them to move on to post-secondary education or a career field, so.
Well, I think there was a portion of your question that was slightly edited for content from our attorney.
Hi, thank you. My name's Tina Neese. As parents, we're consistently being bounced between district requirements and legislative requirements. And we're told, these issues were brought up, and we're told by the legislators up in Tallahassee that it's in the district's hands. And then we get to the district, and not current board, but in the district, and we're told, "No, our hands are tied. We can't do anything." So my question was, in Clay County, did you have those same requirements that I addressed? And if not, then apparently it is a county, Lake County, issue. And is it something that, you know, it would be wonderful if it could be addressed? That's really, okay, the basis might, did it occur in Clay County? If so, then apparently it must be state. If not, then it must be Lake County.
Well, the first part of your question, which was the things on the walls and that, that I'm not real sure what that is, so I'll have to look into that. That's not something that we have in Clay County, that we look for certain things on the wall, other than, we do ask them to post the standard, because they refer to it, it's just a best practice. But beyond that, I don't really know what you're referring to, because I haven't been in the school. So I can certainly address that once I find out more about that. And in terms of the pacing guide, like I said, that's just a best practice. I think that in every district, you're gonna find that they have pacing guides that typically are actually, and hopefully, are created by the teachers along with maybe a specialist for that content area. If not, they should be, because teachers should have input into those guides. That's what we did do in Clay County, is that I met for an entire year with a kindergarten first and second grade teacher from every school. And we spent an entire year looking at the standards. They developed the curriculum map. They developed their own assessments that they would give in their classrooms and analyze the data together. And it was a year-long process that we did. And then we walked away with, what are the most essential standards that kids need to learn? Because there's so many of them. You can't teach them all and focus on all and do it to the depth that they need to. So they determined all of that. So in terms of the pacing guide, that would be a practice that I would want to do here, is making sure that the teachers develop that, and that we give them the support to do it. And so, I don't know if that better answers your question, but, okay.
"What will you do to address absenteeism of students and teachers?"
Well, we certainly want teachers in the classrooms, and we want kids in school. So, you know, again, just making it a great place to work and learn. You know, I can't emphasize that enough. I feel like that's already existed, but there's some things that I know we could do differently that would increase teacher morale. Happy teachers, happy children, happy children, happy parents. And so we want kids to want to come to school. I know that some of the absenteeism is self-inflicted, because I've seen the graduation, the graduation, the in-school and out-of-school suspensions. And so that's an area that I really want to focus on. Are there things that we can do more creatively, rather than putting kids out of school to keep them in school? There's some kids, they just need to go home. But that's probably not the norm for most kids, so I'd like to create some creative programs. One of the things that we did at the high schools recently was to increase student attendance that was being impacted by out-of-school suspensions, is we created a Saturday school. And so rather than going out of school suspension, we have teachers, we pay them their hourly rate of pay, and they come in on Saturdays, and the kids come. They do some manual labor around the schools as part of the discipline, and then they spend time in tutoring. And so we started that this year, and it has been tremendously helpful in reducing the amount of in-school and out-of-school suspensions. We give parents the option, you can keep your kid home for three days, or they can come to school on a Saturday. And it's really worked well. The teachers benefit from it, they enjoy the opportunity to tutor more with kids, and they enjoy that they make some extra income out of the deal. So it's a win-win, and that's really what I bring, is just some out-of-the-box creative things that we can do differently, once we identify what the needs are. And I have no idea what the question was. Oh, increase, yeah. And I just, I think that teacher attendance, if teachers are happier, we can increase morale, deal with some of the things that I know that they're struggling with. I did have a chance to meet with some of your teachers yesterday, and I learned a lot about some of the issues. And there's just so much we can do collectively to increase morale. A lot of that, you know, that has to do with mandates that we can think creatively about. There are some things that, we don't have to take everything as black and white, but we can certainly massage some of the legislation, we can fight against some of the legislation as best that we can. But, you know, that was specific to taking a single test and then identifying a teacher as highly effective or not effective based on a single test that a child takes and then designating them accordingly, which is wrong on so many levels, and I will fight day and night, because I think it is wrong. And I've started the fight, and I know that there's a lot of folks here... And I've started the fight, and I know that there's a lot of folks here. I was really impressed to find that you have that Test Watch group, that is a proactive group, and trying to be an informed group, not just a group that's out there complaining about what's happening, but a group that really wants to take some action. So I look forward to working with them. But, and that question may come up again somewhere else, but the whole idea of teacher morale, get the morale up, I think teachers will want to come to work more, if that's the reason why they're not. I can just assume that maybe that's why they're not coming. It's hard. When you're not happy, it's hard to get up and go to work every day. So we've gotta make it a happy place for everybody.
There is almost universal agreement among all Lake County stakeholders that the combination of state, district, and course, state and district course exams have become intolerable, stressful, and costly burden, especially on our youngest students. Parents and teachers have felt great frustration that these standardized tests are being used improperly, rather than assessing areas for student improvement. They have become substitute metrics in a flawed teacher evaluation system, and anxiety-ridden obstacles to true student learning, such as teaching to the test and advancement. Can you briefly explain your thoughts on the validity of this observation, and explain your philosophy on the future use of standardized tests in Lake County schools?
Can we just disregard the question, and I say amen? I, you know, as I said, I believe in higher standards, but I really think that most of the issues really do center on this issue of testing. And there are some things at the local level that we can control, we can talk about, and I talked about this with teachers, and I talked about it with principals yesterday. Really looking at the assessment calendar, what do we control, and what is actually state-mandated that we have to do, but we can still fight against it. I am adamantly opposed to connecting any state assessment to teacher evaluation. I've worked hard to minimize that through some creative evaluation systems that we've been able to create in Clay County, that I will share with our teachers and our leaders to possibly bring some of those creative solutions here. And then, you know, the whole idea of testing. One of the things that has been encouraging, as we think about some changes at the federal level and the state level as well, is with the new Every Student Succeeds Act, the ESSA, which will be fully implemented in seventeen eighteen, it does, from the federal level, gives some greater flexibility for states to look at the issue of testing, and hopefully bring some relief. I'm not sure exactly what Florida will choose to do in that arena, but one of the things that it does for parents is it gives them the choice of testing. You know, right now, state statute says that there is no opt-out for state testing. However, we know that there are ways that parents are able to make that choice on their own. But the ESSA Act will allow for the state to have an opt-out option. It basically says that it does not prevent the state from having opt-out options for parents. So that was encouraging. I work very closely with that group in our county, just to respect the rights and choices that parents make for their kids, and I'll continue to advocate for that.
This person writes, "It is my understanding that there is a state mandate informing us that low-achieving students in MTSS must receive thirty additional minutes of small-group instruction each day. Can you speak to your interpretation of the mandate for extended reading for MTSS students?" Is the mandate telling us to extend the reading block with their own teacher, or making time in our already-tight school day to move all of our students, general population, and MTSS into small-leveled groups for thirty-minute sessions?
I am, I'm just gonna be honest, I'm not aware of any state mandate that says that MTSS kids have to have extended time. I would think that that is a good practice, if we can provide more time for them. The mandate that, I don't know if it's specific to that, really deals with the extended reading time that's required of schools in the lowest three hundred. That's what the legislation is specific to. So I would have to educate myself. I think I'm pretty well-versed in the legislative mandates, but I am not familiar with anyone that extends the reading time. To really even address the second part of that question, where it talks about extending the reading block with their own teacher, or making time to move all of our students to general populations, so into small-leveled groups. So I'd have to research that a little bit, to give you a more intelligent response to that, because I would hope that students that have identified a specific need through MTSS, that they are getting additional services. That's part of what MTSS is there for, it is a support system.
We could invite the author of the question, if it'd be helpful in providing any sort of, I think I saw your hand up there, so please feel free, come on up, and if you want to further clarify your question.
I was really, I was really surprised when you said that you're not aware that there's a, that there's a law. We were, we have been told that, that all of our MTSS students have to have thirty minutes of extended time in reading. And I've looked online to try to find that, and I haven't been able to find it. So, at our school, we have, we have what we call SIPs time, and all of our one-hundred-and-twenty first graders are divided up into leveled groups, and there's twelve different teachers all over campus, and they go to these different groups for thirty minutes. And it is really difficult, like, we don't even have our own kids in those small groups. So that's actually what we, what is the interpretation of that law at our school.
I think I might have a grasp of what you might be referring to. So we're talking, a kid who's in tier three, for example, has an extra thirty minutes of required intervention daily, but that doesn't necessarily have to occur outside the school day. And that occurs during the school day.
Yeah.
And so your question is about the approach of that, that it seems that your school has taken an approach where you divide those students into various other teachers.
Right.
Who might then service or provide that intervention for those students. And you're looking for a philosophical approach as to whether or not it needs to be done that way, or is that a school-based decision, or some sort of guidance from the district?
I thought it was a law from the state. I thought that there was a law that said that we had to have thirty extra additional minutes for any child that was in the MTSS process.
As I said, I'll be happy to look into that. I'm wondering if that's a local decision, but I think, you know, you bring up a good point in terms of the intervention process, and, which is kind of what your question is based upon, is your tier-two supports, those children who are receiving tier-two interventions through the MTSS. Typically, that occurs as part, in addition to the instruction, with the teacher in a small group, whether it be one-on-one conferencing or small-group instruction, as part of their literacy block during the regular reading block time. It's typically not an extended part of the time. I don't know how you're operating here with two-tier and tier-three interventions. Tier-three, yes, is something that goes above and beyond. Often, there might be a push-in person, a specialist, who's coming in to work with those kids. I'm not real familiar with the concept of dividing them all up, they're obviously leveling the kids, and so they're trying to maximize the time by having kids with similar needs and similar groups, which is a common practice. But something, if there's a more efficient way to do that, or to maximize instructional time with the teacher, then we would certainly want to look at that. So I'd be happy to look at what processes and practices you have in place to provide those tier-two and tier-three interventions. And again, we'll work together to ensure that we're maximizing the time for the kids and for the teacher.
Many of the schools, it's called different things. In our school, it was called, it's called SIPs, because that's the program we use. But in other schools, it's called FINS, and other schools, there's a name for it, and that's what it is. And they take all of the kids in a grade level, and they regroup them for thirty minutes.
And I actually, I looked at your instructional materials online recently, and I, there was a long laundry list of different intervention and things that were in place. And it's hard to support multiple, multiple programs. And so one of the things that I'd like to do is really talk to teachers, tell me what is working, where are you getting the most benefit for kids, and let's minimize maybe the long laundry list of programs, so that from the district level, there is greater support for a fewer amount of programs, so that we can ensure that, you know, and again, we want people to pick what's right for their student populations to meet their needs. But I think that we'll find that what's working in one school, we can benefit by knowing that's probably gonna work with another group of kids of similar needs as well. So that's one of the things I really want to look at, is the interventions, because that goes directly back to my priority, which is really helping those lower-performing learners make learning, annual learning gains, which hasn't been, I don't think's been happening, so.
I agree with you.
Thanks for your question. Although we realize that not all grants are bad, Lake County schools continue to accept money from the Gates Organization. As a taxpayer and a parent, I have yet to see how hiring additional bureaucrats, analysts, consultants, and requiring additional computer seat time for children to take an additional test four times a year is making a difference. These are all requirements of the grant. Lake County taxpayers have continually spoken out against accepting Gates grants. Hillsborough County accepted Gates grants to form their strategic plan, which has many similarities to ours, only to have to borrow sixty-eight point five million dollars from their district reserves just to make payroll. Right now, Lake County is heading down the same path. Lake County's strategic plan shows a projected deficit of seven point three million dollars by two thousand eighteen. As the new superintendent of Lake County schools, how will you address these bad grants in a strategic plan that has been pre-planned until two thousand twenty?
Well, I'd have to find out what "bad" is. So one of the things that I also, in that strategic plan, that action plan that I submitted, was to look at all of the programs, every grant, every program, everything that's happening. Let's talk about what is working, what's not working. What I won't do is just take a grant just for the money, if it doesn't fit with our vision and mission, and what's best for kids. So we have to weigh that against, is everything that we're doing aligned to that vision and mission? If it's not, we're not gonna do it. And one of the things I've committed to is to looking at whether it be, you know, I've heard a lot about the personalized learning, I'm sure that that's the grant specifically that you're referring to, and I've promised to look at, is it meeting the needs of all kids? I have heard from some folks that it does feel like there is some, that there is some benefit for kids, portions of the grant, in certain populations. But again, looking at every school, figuring out what's working, what's not working, I am committed to looking at this, and making sure that we're gonna take the money, that is there's truly a benefit for teachers and kids, and improving student achievement. If it's not, then we won't keep doing it. We're not gonna keep doing something that's not benefiting kids.
Florida standards and Common Core are considered by some to be child abuse for K through five students, because they are too hard for young students, because they are not developmentally appropriate. This might be similar to a previous question, but how can this be mitigated so kids don't hate learning, because their brains are not developed enough to cope with inappropriate concepts? I guess I'll go to our author of this question. Do you feel like it was entered previously by the last time, or are you looking for some additional information?
Maybe some examples, if there are, of how to mitigate a lot of, there's a lot of information out there from child development specialists.
Thank you.
Vance Yocum, there's a lot of information out there, and videos and so forth, from child development specialists, saying that this is detrimental to younger kids, because the new standards have been pushed down to the point where the kids' brains are not developed to handle the concepts. So then they can't figure it out, so then they get upset and go crying. We've had, there've been parents here complaining about it, and is there a solution to that?
I think the solution is what I proposed earlier, is that we really look at every individual child's needs. There are students who excel with the new standards, they're ready, developmentally ready for those standards. Other kids, they are not, and I think that that's where you do find the crying moms, and especially in the area of math, where they're just so frustrated, because it is very challenging and difficult. You know, I'm all for that rigor, but it does have to be developmentally appropriate for every child. The teachers know the individual needs of kids, and I believe that if we allow them the opportunity, without putting restraints on them by tying them to, you know, dates and times, and some of the things that I think we can lessen some of those restrictions on them, if the testing would go away, a lot of this would resolve itself, because teachers feel so pressured right now. And that pressure, I think, gets down to parents, and it gets down to the kids as well. I think that, you know, I don't know how to answer that question differently, other than to just say it goes back to the individual needs of the kids, and what is developmentally appropriate for that child, and then adjusting the standards, the practices, whatever we need to do to meet their individual needs.
All right, we've got just a couple more here. State statute requires principals to recruit administrators, teachers, parents, and community leaders to a school advisory committee, or SAC. These committees are to meet regularly, and to develop and track the school improvement plan, discuss school issues and policies, and propose solutions. However, a quick survey of teachers and parents will reveal that after the state cut funding for specific SAC use and approval, many principals have relegated this important stakeholder body to the role of either rubber-stamp for their policies, or worse, no role at all. Can you speak honestly to your thoughts on the role and purpose of these SACs, and your experience with them in Clay County?
First of all, that's accurate. It is required in state statute that the SAC committee exists, and it's a very, it's a very strong voice in Clay County. One of the things that I've done recently is, I created a district advisory committee that was kind of the governing body that made sure that our SAC committees at our school are operational, and that they are getting the input from parents, and that it is an active voice within that school to look at the needs of the school, as well as to advocate for that school. So the district advisory committee has representatives from every region within the district, and they are the liaison between the SAC committee at the school and the district level. And I meet with them, we were meeting every month, we've just reduced that a little bit, but what I do is, they come back, they're the voice from the SAC committees, we have conversation about needs, we talk about district-wide issues, we talk about this very issues that you're talking about, that they were very concerned about the over-testing. Those parents went out to the SAC committees, we did an open forum about assessments, we brought parents in, we had a room full of people on every side of the issue. It was just a very collaborative conversation about what we can do at the local level, similar to what this Test Watch group has done, how can we come together to be a proactive voice, and really addressing the needs of every school, every region. We have one area of the district that's very overcrowded, we were looking at, what are the options? You know, redistricting is a very, very ugly term. What can we do to, you know, what can we do to address the issue of overcrowding? And so for that particular group, we brought those SAC committees together, and we had some collaborative conversation, and we brainstormed, we charted on charts, they shared their ideas, we took them back to the district committee, and took them back to the board to begin really looking at some creative approaches to meeting that need. So that is a conduit between the district and the schools, and they need to be operational. That parent voice and those community advocates within that particular school is really important. So I will push to make sure that those are operational. And there's accountability to that, simply when we have the district committee, and I'm not sure if you have a district advisory committee, but if not, we will, to continue that work together, because it is, it was a good way to really get some strong advocates, because the communication is, you always struggle with communication, doesn't matter how well your strategic communication plan is. It was great to be able to sit down with parents, have conversation, then say, "All right, you are now the voice, take this back to your school SAC, and here's the message." And we all went back with a common message and understanding. So I have really utilized that group. I know that Ms. Luke had a chance to, I think, call and talk with one of those parents on our district advisory committee, and I just think it's a very collaborative group, and it's just been a great addition to our district, and something that we'll work towards here as well.
So perhaps that might answer the second half of the question, which reads as this, "In this age of almost instant robo-phone calls and websites, do you believe they are still needed?" And I'm assuming that "they" refers to SAC committees, yes?
And I'm not sure in relation to the SAC committee. I think that, I think you're saying, in lieu of SAC committees, maybe there were just robo-calls and other communications. Yeah, and I will utilize every communication tool possible, but first and foremost, that one-on-one, that voice. So one of the things that the SAC committee does is that they do whatever the communication is, whatever's happening, they have a website within their school, and they post the information on the website. So we try to go where parents are, a lot of them are on their phones. You know, so they're on social media, they post it on Facebook. We take advantage of everything that we put out, we put out consistently on every school's website, on their Facebook page, and then each SAC committee has a Facebook page where they're interacting with the community in order to enhance communication. So it'll be far beyond just robo-calls, and, you know, a lot of people don't even go to websites anymore, they really just want the accessibility of their phones. So we'll hit 'em all. If anything, you'll probably get more communications than you ever wanted, but people will be informed, and I've made that commitment. I want people to know why we're doing what we're doing. And that will always be, why are we doing it? If I'm making a decision, or we're collectively making a decision, here's why we're doing it. The answer's always gonna be, because it benefits kids, but you might want a little bit more information, so we'll go deeper, making sure that you know why we're doing what we're doing.
This question has a little bit of background information to it. It's the last one I have, and then we'll move into, I think, an opportunity for you to share a closing, and then we'll move into our public input. I have a couple of cards for that. Here's some of the background information. It says, "The Seminole County Schools' annual budget filing for two thousand fifteen sixteen reported and documented that a full eighty-two percent of their total four hundred and seventy million-dollar budget..." that a full eighty-two percent of their total four hundred and seventy million dollar budget was targeted to instruction and direct school expenses." The Seminole Schools District shares many similarities with Lake County Schools, most notably gross underfunding on a per-student basis of state allocation, or state education allocations. Seminole ranks sixty-second out of sixty-seven in this area. Yet, Seminole seems to have developed a strategy for student success that ranks fifth academically in the state versus the same sixty-seven counties. It would appear that this, a, well, formerly a graded district, has a kids budgeting, uh, kids-first budgeting culture and strategy. Members of our board, as well as many other Lake County stakeholders, have been asking for a similar accounting and culture from our own county administrators for several years, and has largely gone, largely gone unanswered, and there is a very general perception that the opposite ratio actually exists, that the various headquarters and other staff positions absorb a disproportionate amount of limited funds. So, can you speak to your thoughts on this, and tell us how you would implement a classroom-first culture with your budgeting priority?
Well, I think they just defined it. It is a classrooms-first plan. Um, we actually had a, a plan in Clay County called Classrooms First, um, where we ranked second in the state in the amount, in the percentage of funds that went back into the classroom. I think some of the discrepancy, and I, I, I know that you've asked that question, in terms of the percentage of funds that are actually attributed to the classroom, there's been some discrepancies on the percentages of that. So, I would like to really understand exactly what is the dollar amount that's going into the classrooms, and how do we maximize that? If you look at my plan for, for budgeting, it really does, looking at every single program, every service, going to really look at every position. I want to look at positions of people who aren't in front of kids, and making sure that we have the right people in the right places to make sure that we're supporting the schools, and that everything goes back to that classrooms-first, because that's where our priority has to be, because that's where our kids are. So, um, it's, you know, I don't, I can elaborate further, but I can tell you that that's going to be a priority to make sure that, um, that we invest the greatest amount of funds, um, and our best people in our classrooms with our kids.
I think there's a, a second part to that about the process. Further, are you willing to commit to giving a voice to key stakeholders, such as administrators, teachers, and parents, and the development of a metric to be reviewed annually, which tracks our district's success in achieving this culture?
Yes, and in that action plan, again, it does talk about what that process looks like. It's a well-defined step-by-step process that we're, it, and this is a process that we're going to have to do collectively and collaboratively. I talked to the principals this week, we talked about them being key, key voices in the determination of what's happening in their classrooms, and what the priorities are in terms of funding. Are there things that we need to quit doing? Are there things that, um, we can do more efficiently and more cost-effectively through other means? You know, one, one example of that is as we, is where I am currently. I gave the, so if you heard my, was that yesterday? The days are kind of running together. You know, I, I talked about one of the things that, that we did. We, we were falling again below the three percent, which is the state requirement minimum. And so, I brought in, um, folks from all across the district. We sat in a room, and I said, we're gonna, we're gonna, I need three million dollars. So, we looked at, um, we looked at every program, we eliminated some contracted services of things that we felt like we're duplicating other programs, or other services, we looked at positions. And I tell you, we made some tough decisions. There were people impacted by it, we tried to minimize the impact on people. But we had some programs that had been just, you know, those programs that people just love, because they've been around forever and ever, and they were great things, but they really could be, um, admitted, or the instruction that they were providing could be delivered through a more cost-effective means. And, you know, with technology today, that there, there are things that we can do differently, um, in terms of programs and services. And so, we looked at all of those, and we made some tough cuts. But we walked away with our three million dollars, and we were able actually to take that and put it into compensation for teachers and come to the table. The past couple of years, we've had to say we didn't have any money, and this year, we were actually able to say that we had some money as a result of that work that we did. So, and that, that goes back, again, directly to the classrooms. Happy teachers, happy children, happy children, happy parents.
You're good. Um, that was the last question that was submitted, so I, would you like the opportunity to, uh?
All right, pardon my ignorance of procedure, uh, but I, what I put in as a question, I guess, has been taken as comment.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Did you have a, a question you would like to submit? Yeah, I saw the comment. I'm sorry, I thought it was for public input, that you wanted to share on that. Did you have a, a question you'd like to?
Oh, it was just portfolios and report cards and, man?
Yes, please, come on up.
Again, pardon me for not knowing how this works. I've spoken to the board several times about the use of portfolios and report cards for third-grade promotion. Florida statute ten oh eight point twenty-five six C talks about how you use, the, the, the items you can use to document two of the different types of good cause exemptions, one of those being the portfolio. Previously, the district, as far as I know, has not allowed the report card to be used whatsoever as that, part of that documentation. Uh, and then another issue that I have had brought up numerous times is that, the DOE's rule six A dash one point oh nine four two two one, says that chapter and unit tests from the district's core adopted reading curriculum could be used for items in the portfolio. That is not now being used. If you could share your thoughts on how those items could be used in the future, I'm sure there's a lot of people would like to hear that.
So, the, um, the statute is very clear in terms of third-grade promotion, and that, yes, as, as an alternative to not passing the third-grade FSA in ELA, that they can use portfolio assessments. The state gives us those assessments that are specific to the portfolio to ensure that it aligns to the, um, to the standards. There are different versions of that, and some of which, as long as we can ensure that the, the assessments that are given align to those standards, there's portfolio A, there's options B, so there's different, um, portfolio options that you can use for that. Typically, districts, I, I know in Clay County, we don't use any other assessments. We use the portfolio, we use the, the assessments that are provided by the state, because it's a good way to ensure that, that they are, um, in alignment to the standards. One of the other things, there are a lot of other alternatives, um, including the SAT ten. The state did just say add two more assessments to that. Accelerated Reader, the STAR test that goes along with that, is an alternative assessment now, and so is I, um, is I Ready. And those are two that you're using here in the district as well. So, there are alternate, alternatives to that. Um, what you're proposing, I'm certainly willing to look into.
Like I said, the statute is super clear that the report cards should be included, and it has not been at this point, so.
Um, I, I, I have one more card that I think may be a question about arts in schools. Is that a question? Oh, yes, please, all right, come on up and, and, and ask your question about arts. And then, Kim, yours is public input? Okay, got it.
With more and more testing coming into the schools and with the district, recess in the arts have been taken away from our students. Um, with Lake County pushing a college and career-ready status for our kids, how are they pushing for a college and career-ready art student? With me as, for my child, who's here today, if you want to talk to her later, she's available. She wants art, she wants a career in the arts, but here in Lake County, she won't get that opportunity until she starts high school. Now, it is available in middle schools, but because she's an ESE student, she will go into those groups where she will need that extra reading time, and they take the electives away from those students. So, if you are our superintendent, how are you going to assure that all of the kids in all of the career paths are ready? And put arts and music, both, not one or the other, for our students, especially younger? Um, I'm a parent that runs an art club at our school and a robot club. We've had to come in as a parent to offer those things to our students. So, I'd like to know what your thoughts are about the arts, and how you can put those back into the schools for us.
Okay.
Thank you.
I tell you, I will be a strong advocate for art, music, and PE in every elementary school. I realize that, um, it's expensive, and often, um, those are programs, when budget cuts come, that they get cut, and that's sad that that happens. It, it happened in Clay County, and last year, we did some repurposing of resources, because I wanted to add back music in every school. I felt like we, we had PE, uh, in every school, um, and in most of the schools, they had a technology and a media resource, but we were lacking with, with music and art. So, I made sure that every school got music last year. My goal was then to move on to look at other revenue sources to add art back into the program. I think it's critical. I talked, um, again, it must have been yesterday, the days are running together, um, about my, my voice and advocacy for social emotional learning, in addition to, and how it's combined with academic learning. And the arts are part of that, in making sure that we develop, we call it the heart and the head. You can't just always address the head, you've got to make sure you're addressing the heart. And that, that the time that kids can spend in active play in the arts and the creativity all goes back to improved academic achievement. It's all related, goes back to the development of the writing and the reading scores that we talked about earlier. So, um, I will certainly make that a priority, not something that's going to happen overnight. We've, we've got to do, to get into the budget, and, um, really think more creatively, and see what we can do to find some money. But that was, is something I would, I would love to see art, music, and PE, and I commit that I'm going to work towards that, and get there just as soon as we can.
I, I know you've shared a lot tonight on a wide variety of topics, but would you like to take a moment and, uh, offer any sort of concluding thoughts?
Well, I thought I would take a minute. I haven't really had a chance to tell my story. I've been answering a lot of questions, and, um, to tell you why I'm here, and why this is important to me. And, and I'll, I'll keep the story short, but, because it's kind of a long story. It actually goes back to my childhood. But, but as a child, I, I loved sports. I was, I, my dad and I would sit on Sunday afternoons and watch football, and it was one of my fondest memories. He passed away about two years ago, and I always think about him on Sundays, because he taught me a love of this game. And I loved the strategy, and I loved winning, and I loved the competition that occurred, um, in that game. I had a little red, white, and blue skirt when I was like four years old, and I, the New England Patriots, because they were red, white, and blue, I would, I would wear that every Sunday, and I was standing in front of the fireplace and cheer, and I'm sure I drove my dad crazy. But, but I just, I loved and developed a passion for the game. I was also the middle child of five children, and so, that competitive spirit really became as a, as a survival tool for me, because, um, I was always competing with two older sisters, the homecoming queen and the, um, captain of the cheerleaders, and always really striving to be competitive with them. So, I loved that. So, I really strove to be, um, I want to be a great athlete. And so, I, I tried a lot of different sports, and it just, I finally just came to the realization, I'm not going to be a great athlete. I'm not even going to be a good athlete at all. I just didn't have that ability. But what I found in myself was I had ability to inspire others to excel and to coach. And so, I found that I was going to pursue a career field where I could coach, and I could inspire others to excel. So, so I sought out education, because I felt like it gave me that avenue to be that coach and to be that inspiration, especially in times of challenges, when it's the bottom of the ninth and you're down by six points. And I met my first challenge when I was twenty-one years old, and I was an intern, a third-grade intern, and in Jacksonville, Florida, in an inner-city school, the school's most struggling school, very, very challenging. I was in a third-grade classroom, and I was watching a class, it was a second-grade classroom, that was just, they were the ones who were swinging off the, the, the steps and running down the hall. And I, I watched teachers come and go over the course of that first half of that year out of that classroom. But I, but I watched them, I was, was very intrigued by what was going on in there. So, in November, I went to the principal, and I said, you know, I'm going to be graduating in December, and I would love to take that classroom. And she looked at me, and she said, I, have you ever thought of a different career field? She said, you're quiet, kids are never going to respond to you, there's no way you can do this. And I walked away devastated. I had invested a lot of time, and, and I, I knew that this was what I wanted to do. I wanted to coach, I wanted to inspire and develop a love of learning for those kids. And I just felt like I'm not going to have that opportunity, and I was just devastated. I went home, and my husband, we'd only been married a few months then, and he looked at me, and, and he, he understands my passion and competition. He says, get your head in the game, get back in there, get back in there. And so, I got back in my car, and I drove back up there, the principal was still there, and I said, I'm going to make you an offer. I said, I haven't graduated yet, so, but I'm still in your building. Let me go in there as a substitute for those kids between now and the end of December. If I can't show you in three weeks that I can make a difference for those kids, I will walk away, you'll never see me again, and I'll consider your option to pursue another, pursue another career. But if I can do it, I expect you to, to hire me. So, I became their fourth teacher in January of that year. And she came to me at the end of the year, and she, she said, because I did it in three weeks, I showed that I could do it. I got in there, and I developed, uh, just a, uh, just a family with those kids, we just became side-by-side partners. I had him, I had one who would hang upside down from the table during reading time, that's okay, I just put the book on the floor. And eventually, he learned to sit in a chair and read with, beside me. But it was, it was just an amazing time that I spent in three weeks with them. And then I had several months with them towards the end of the year. The, I, I go to that story, because at the end of the year, the principal came to me, and she said, wow. She said, not have hired, for me, not to have hired you would have been the biggest mistake of my professional career. And I, I keep those words in my mind, because when the possi- the possible seemed impossible for me, and possible seemed impossible for those kids, I use that as a mo- a way to inspire others to say, the possible is possible. It's possible, and for our teachers, it's possible for our kids, it's possible for us as a community and parents, and to really challenge and motivate them. I want to use those words to inspire others, and I do that over and over again, inspiring kids to learn, teachers to teach, and leaders to lead. And I want to do that here for you, because I think that my greatest strength, that passion, that desire, that motivation to meet the needs of kids is something that I can bring to you, and turn around this district collaboratively, collectively, together, with us all committing, because I know you have this message of all means all, and I support that, and all does mean all. So, I'm, I am, would be honored to be here with you all and to lead this district, because we're going to do great things for kids together, and I'm going to use that message of inspiration to keep, to keep us in the game. We're going to play the game, and we're going to win for kids.
I think you've got a couple of supporters out there. Very nice. Well, thank you so much for taking so much time, and, and I know it was, uh, a lot to answer all those questions on, such a wide variety of topics. We have one card for public input tonight, and that's Kim Cronin.
Good evening. Sorry I'm late, but I had a grandson that was in a play today, and there's nothing better than to watch a kindergarten play, so. It was great. The gingerbread man didn't show up, so they had to put in a replacement, and she did excellent. But I just, I just, you know, I did talk to Chairman Dodge yes, like, yesterday, and I just wanted to let yous all know of the meeting that we had yesterday, uh, the SEIU workers, um, with Ms. Carnegie, and everyone was, felt as though she would be the greatest change for the district, okay? I had, I tried to get a variety of workers, so it wasn't just, you know, one group. So, I had, I had a different variety from different, different classifications. We asked her some questions, we liked her answers, and we think that, you know, she would be a good change for the district. So, I just wanted to let yous all know that. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing. Uh, just so you all are aware, the next steps of this process is that tomorrow, we don't have anything scheduled, so the board has the chance and the opportunity to reflect on all of the information we've received over the last couple of weeks, in preparation for our decision meeting on Thursday morning at nine-thirty here in this building. In that, in the time until that meeting, certainly you are welcome to, uh, share your comments with, uh, with board members. Uh, and, um, and board members, certainly you're welcome to, to seek follow-up information from any, uh, any group that you would like. Certainly, I'll have, um, feedback to share with you, uh, from the various stakeholder groups, but I can tell you, they all echo, uh, Kim's sentiments exactly. I was, what she just shared of the SEIU is exactly what I've heard from every other group that has had the opportunity to meet with her. So, um, that being said, I, I suppose we'll move into our comments. Sandy, do you have anything you'd like to share tonight?
Well, I'd just like to say, uh, thank you for everybody showing up tonight and having this great interest, uh, all the stakeholders and our employees that are here. I'm sure you're interested in knowing who your next boss is going to be. But, uh, I would like to, uh, thank her for being here, and, uh, it was enjoyable in our conversation that we had in the interview, that you shared that saying about the athleticism there, and, uh, I appreciate that. But I would like to add something to Thursday's meeting.
Okay.
On the agenda. And, uh, I'd like for discussion to be put on the agenda about doing a hiring freeze on administration right now at the county level of any, uh, positions that may come available, and they're, right now in the near future, because then if we fill those positions now, and she comes on, that doesn't leave her any levity to, to do what she may need filled to do there also.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but all of those positions would be contracted just for this particular year, that they would come back again, uh, under the, for, for next academic year? Depending on the position, I suppose, is?
Administrators under annual contract right now for the rest of this year.
So, so.
What you're saying, if someone leaves right now, that we don't do a rehire until she comes on board, that's what you're saying? Not free, not free, but if someone were to leave, right?
Well, we would be freezing anyone that's in a retirement stage, that's retiring, and their position then becomes available, or if someone quits in, in administration, that we would put that on hold until we get the new superintendent onboard.
Okay.
And you can effectively doing that by not approving the position to be available, to be filled. to be filled?
We can do that?
Yes, sir.
That would be just cause?
Superintendent would come to you with allocation if there was an opening there, but if you decide that you're not going to allocate that position for the rest of the year, then there's nobody to fill, you don't fill the position.
Okay.
If you really want to do it, though, you want to go through which positions that you're going to do that for, specifically enumerate them, and specifically not allocate funds for those positions in the event someone terminates their employment or an opening becomes available. And I don't think you can do that by Thursday.
No.
I think you're going to need to wait till the January 9th meeting, and then you can go through a whole list of non-allocated positions, or just, I mean, discuss that with the superintendent if she won't be recommending any positions.
I think also, the reality is, is should things go well on Thursday, we're going to have a new superintendent first of the year. So the sooner we can get her on board, the better for...
Is that, is that the plan? I mean, is Ms. Carnegie?
Yes.
Is it your intention to start? Would you, if you were hired, would it be your intention to start at the first of the year? Or is it the intention to have there be a transition? I have always been confused by this.
In my world, she'd start as soon as possible.
Okay, let me see if I can kind of frame this a little bit without stepping over the lines in terms of an interview-type question here, but we as a board had allocated for a superintendent emeritus position to be able to create an overlap. Now, we as a board can certainly have some say on what that overlap looks like, if there's an initial transition period based on the availability of, you know, when, if we were to make an offer and she were to accept it, when she could step into that position, how long that transition lasts, and if then she and our existing superintendent eventually swap places, and at what point that happens to where the balance of the decision-making would occur.
It is a traditional, in my world, experience, question to ask the potential employee when they can start. That's what I was getting at. Can we ask her that?
You ask her when she would be available to start if she were hired?
Is that a negotiation, is that in the negotiating?
Would you like me to be here tomorrow?
I'm getting the sense that you're available pretty quickly.
I'll just answer that by saying, we have a new superintendent, he's been there three weeks, and he has been extremely supportive of my endeavors here. And so he has said, you know, we'll make the transition work on their end, so he said, you just set the timeline and we'll adjust accordingly there, so I can be here whenever you need.
It's open, okay. It can be discussed further later.
Yeah, and we as a board can certainly have some greater discussion about what that transition looks like and where the decision-making is happening.
Mr. Chairman, I assume that we're going to have some of those discussions depending upon what occurs Thursday morning?
Correct.
Because there'll also be, if we're wanting to move forward, then we're going to need to start negotiating a contract as well.
Yes, yes.
So I support your two-day freeze.
Well, my whole intent about this is that we don't tie her hands
Sure.
to where she's being put personnel on her that she may not agree with or may agree with, so, you know, just leaving it open for her to make a decision. And also, if we even really need a position, because she's talked about this morning about looking at the chart that we have, to see what positions are actually needed and not. So, I mean, it leaves that open.
Absolutely. So certainly any position that comes before us. I think we're under some good advice there, that we can take a hard, fast look at that and determine whether or not we want to allocate for that position.
Okay.
And perhaps that might accomplish the same goal that you're going for, without us having to kind of forecast and theorize on a bunch of positions that might not even come before us.
And my last thing is, if you're not here Thursday morning, and I'm sure a lot of you will be, but if you're not, have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you. Christine, did you have anything you'd like to share tonight?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank everybody who came out. I'm so impressed with the, I'm so pleased with the turnout, and I know there was a huge amount of people here behind the scenes who interviewed Ms. Carnegie and arranged everything, and I just think our community has really come together to provide feedback. So please do provide feedback. I'm still interested in any feedback you do have. So, I had, no, that was this morning, I'm done with Robert Chiselman's order. Yes, and I also would like to wish you all a Merry Christmas, and if I don't see you, have a good break as well.
Thank you. Bill?
I just want to address to Sandy's point and to when we were serving and in the process, that literally because there are some key slot positions coming open, that's why it was accelerated and started so early, because it was felt that the new superintendent should fill those critical roles. So that was sort of the idea from the, I mean, that's why we're so early with the June, and that transition, I think, will be very smooth. This has been, I don't think I've gotten five hours' sleep. This is probably the most important decision that this board will make, because it will last long after we're gone. And the response from the community, the response and directness Mrs. Carnegie has been appreciated and obviously well-received. The one thing that I want to share is, over the last few weeks, that I will get a phone call and it will be a person told a person told a person to go check out this person. And that if there are concerns, that bringing it directly to the board rather than spreading it amongst, because things become bigger and bigger. And I will share with you that a couple of the concerns that were vetted and resolved, that in the interview today, that one was spoken of specifically. And so, but the idea of you think you know someone who knows someone who knew something about someone, whose cousin knew something, and they told, because their mother knew, a grandmother, seriously, a phone call, and we need to vet this, because there's nothing more important than the work that we're doing here, but it also needs to be dealt with fidelity and integrity and respect. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I forgot something, very important. Natalie, if you would have the superintendent on her condolences letters, Tim Wilden, electrician at the North Maintenance, it was his granddaughter that was ran over Saturday. He just lost his son in November, and, but it's not the granddaughter's father, but another son. So this is two tragedies that's happened here. So, and they've created a GoFundMe account, but certainly I'd like the superintendent to send a letter to him. Thank you.
And Merry Christmas.
I also wanted to thank Ms. Carnegie for being so attentive to the public and making yourself so available and meeting with our stakeholder groups and answering these questions that anybody could write down today. So we appreciate your professionalism, and I'm really excited about some things to come in the future of Lake County schools. I personally would like to thank Tracy Wood and Stacy Dempsey. They are my two appointees to the Superintendent Search Committee, and they are here, they have been at every meeting, they have been completely invested to the point of late-night phone calls and stressed-out discussions about this, because we do realize what an important decision this is. They have children in the system, and they want what's best for Lake County schools as well as all of you that are here. So we appreciate that, and Merry Christmas.
And just a reminder, Thursday morning at 9:30, for any other person who would like to provide their feedback that has not already done so or does not have an opportunity to contact a board member, we would certainly appreciate and value that. And with that, Mr. Johnson, did you have any other closing remarks?
Not other than to say that, just remember that without Michelle Hoppensatt and Morgan Black being here, that we'd be standing in a dark room.
They continue to exceed expectations all throughout this process. Thank you very much. Any objection to adjourning for the evening?
Oh, no.
All right, then we are adjourned.